Okay, we're gonna reconvene our meeting from June night. Let us open the prayer list on stand. Gracious Father Lord, we come this evening just thanking you for all your grace and mercy and blessings. We ask your guidance and direction in order as we deliberate through the business of the county. We thank you for all your mercy and grace upon our nation, upon our state, upon our county. Rest now, Lord, as all you can do in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. First thing we do now. Our agenda tonight would be to go into closed session and of course with North Carolina General Staff 143, 318, 1183, and 6. We're gonna add 3 to that as well, and 6 for personnel. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Does that move?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we have the motions come out of closed session. Does that move?
Second.
Motion's second to come out of closed session. We need a motion to authorize the county manager and chairman to make contact with the county manager's candidate and report back to the board within five days. I wish. Does that move?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. We are at a closed session. We will go into our regular meeting, which we've already opened. And the first item on our agenda will be to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Will we approve the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, our first item on the agenda would be unannounced delegations, our citizens' comments,
Thank you for letting me speak to you about the budget. My concern about the budget is concerning the water department.
You're welcome to go ahead and take the comments now. We will have a public hearing. I just want to make you aware that you have the opportunity to comment now or do a public hearing for the budget if that's your citizens' comments. But anyway, if you wanna go ahead now, that's fine. But we will perform a public hearing on the budget.
When is that?
That will actually be the next item on the agenda.
Whenever you want me to speak, it's fine.
Okay, if it's on the budget, that would be the time that they want to speak. Okay, there are no other citizens' comments. We will call for a public hearing on our 2014 to 2015 annual budget. We need a motion to go into public hearing. Does that move?
Second.
Motion's second to go into public hearing. We are now into public hearing. We will hear comments from the public regarding the 2014 budget.
I think he wanted to get you on record as being speaking during the hearing, I think, through the clock.
That's fine.
We have a very well-run water department. We have that for many years. And we've built a reserve over that amount of time. And we have very reasonable water rates here in the county currently. And last year, for the first time to my knowledge, water funds were used to fund current operations. If I read the budget correctly, the amount of money taken from the water department to fund county operations has substantially increased this year. This is gonna have negative effects on the ability of the water department to keep up the water lines in the county. And it almost certainly assures, if it continues, that water rates will have to rise. And I feel like it's short-sighted to use this source of funds for current operations. Thank you very much.
All right. No one else?
Commissioners County Manager Chuck Brothers, 45, Dr. Neil Rowe. I think that, I think I'm correct in saying that as part of the planning department and on the planning board, that I'm correct in saying that y'all have seen fit to inject some capital into this year's budget to look into the future of our subdivision and zoning ordinance to bring onboard the, some outside source to help us get over some of this ambiguous language that we got on our ordinance. And I know I sent an email to y'all not too long ago, but I don't know if that had any merit on y'all's decision. But from our standpoint and being on the planning board for five years, it is much appreciated that y'all have taken this initiative to do this because it is, I think time is of the essence to make this happen before we get into another realm of growth, that we can get some of this language that is very broad and very gray. I think Mr. Windley used that term at one of our planning board meetings not too long ago, that there is a lot of room for various interpretations that we need to get into, 2014 interpretation. So, from the planning board, I appreciate y'all's ability to do that.
Anyone else? I would thank you for the comments. We'll call for a motion to come out of public hearing.
Does that move?
Second.
Motion's second to come out of public hearing. All right, we have before us our 2014 to 15 budget for the upcoming year, starting July 1. County manager and finance officer, Department head, or diligent office. County manager, do you have any comments before we start discussion?
Do you remember the changes? I don't know.
I have questions. It's similar to that.
Sandy, I have a few comments.
Sure.
In your packet, I included a list of the summary of changes that we made since the original proposal was given to you all. And I just wanna make sure that you all understand all the changes and don't have any questions about that before you vote on the budget.
Yes, I think we, I've looked them over.
Okay.
Board, did we have any comments on the changes?
Not on the, not on the changes, the summary sheet if you're referring to.
Okay.
I see that our building grounds is at 354,000. This is not on the new summary. This is looking back. And I just wanted to make sure that we were, that we were in good shape there. Do you remember the, I'm not asking you for any specifics, but the deliberation and the decision-making on that number?
Yes, everything is included there. Those numbers were built on the changes and those issues that we had last year. Yes, sir. Everything is included there.
I don't have any other questions about the summary changes.
Sandy?
Yes, sir.
On what Chuck was just talking about, is that what called professional services?
Yes, so the professional services includes 504 GIS and then 15,000 for that, the estimated amount for that study.
Sandy, the reserve fund, at what level are we at that?
The fund balance? Right now, we're at about 2.6 million.
And that's what percentage? I know we are quite a lot.
I believe it's about 24%.
And that's basically where we have been the last few years?
Yes, we're very close.
Okay. This is a balanced budget. Tax rate has not gone up, 64 cents per hundred. I know there was some concerns about the water department funds. I think last year, one of the first years that we began to allocate some of the expenses that our departments go, undertake as a result of handling those funds and finance department, various departments do have duties that are attributed to those, to those funds being, taken in, accounted for, and so forth. So, we do recognize the concern with that. Certainly, we try to minimize it as much as possible. All right, any other comments on the budget?
I would ask a question about that last day that you spoke, about the water department. Do you recall that, was that brought to our attention as an accounting practice by our audit?
No, that was something that John brought up and built into the budget last year to allocate more of the costs. We have always allocated some costs, but they were limited to central administration finance and the tax office. And in the budget that he created last year, it spread those reimbursements throughout more departments that actually do also provide, you know, services to the water department. This year, the number has gone up because some of the duties from the water department have actually been brought into the general fund. So, that is why the number is substantially higher this year than it was last year. The meter reading and cutoffs has been brought into customer service to be handled by customer service. That's why the number has gone up so sharply this year.
It's a more qualified way of keeping up with what the true costs are.
Yes, sir. And my understanding is from contact in other counties around the state, that this is how most counties do it.
All right. What is the place of the board for our 2014 budget, 2014 and 15 budget?
Might ask the board also, when you make your motion, motion for the budget ordinance approval, not just the budget, but the budget ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we accept the budget ordinance approval placed before us at this time.
Aye. That motion for, for board accept the plan 14, 15 budget ordinance.
I'll second that.
I second. Motion's second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we thank you, and we have a budget for 2014 to 15. All right, the next item on our agenda would be consideration of zoning ordinance tax amendment, amendment, zoning article seven, section 701, that allows seasonal agricultural housing in A1 zoning districts as permitted, as a permitted use. We don't have that as a public hearing. Aye.
Yes, sir.
All right, we would, we would need to go into public hearing for that.
Yes, sir.
That's been announced.
Yes, sir.
Does that move?
All right, the motion, and, yeah, second.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, we, I think, Mr. Windley and I discussed earlier putting a time limit on this too, rather than being year-round. Add to this wording so that it is for 180 days maximum per year, per calendar year, so that it can't be classified as 100% residential.
Okay, let me read that again, so everybody's clear on that. That would be more yours. Okay, the, the ordinance tax amendment, amending the zoning ordinance article seven, section 701, to allow seasonal agricultural housing in A1 zoning districts as a permitted use for up to 180 days per year. All right. Okay, we are in public hearing. We need a vote on that.
We need to receive public comment.
All right, we need a vote to go into public hearing. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we're in public hearing for our tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. All in for the comments. Sure.
Obviously, this was a topic that came up to the planning board at our May meeting. It was kind of a time of the essence thing for the principals of the county gen to get something running and up and going so they could be in place pre-harvest season so that seasonal workers would come in. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I think there's another board member here, but I don't think that we had any discussion nor was the principal owners that, or owner, or one of the owners that was in our meeting was made aware that there was gonna be a statutory time limit placed on when the workers could be there on 180 days. If that is the case, I don't know that we are actually being fair to the petitioners in regards to placing a time limit on their, on them, and they're not aware of that because they left our meeting the other day of the assumption that it was gonna be approved as presented. And, but I'm not opposed to the 180 days. We just need to establish, you know, if there's some parameters due to inclement weather or prolonged harvest, which 180 days, I mean, should get them through, should get them through harvest season, I would think, but, you know, you don't never know. I don't wanna, I don't wanna put something on them in this particular situation that would, that would hamstring them. Not opposed to it, but I don't want them to be caught off guard with something that's being passed that was not discussed in their process. And I think I'm correct.
He basically said not three months, three and a half months, is what he said would give him time.
So, that would be six months. That should be more than adequate time. But if this passes tonight, they need to be made aware instead of, instead of assuming 90 days, they need to be made aware that there is a time limit, which I'm in favor of it, of not, of what Commissioner Filton has said about, if you give them everything and they, somebody's gonna assume that it could be year-round, which we know that that's not gonna be the case. But if they change ownership in the gin, just saying that if that opportunity comes, the change in ownership and the statute is one thing. I just think we need to be front and forward and, and make them aware that there is a time limit to this, to this. I'm not opposed to it, I just think they need to be made aware.
Well, it may be something like a vegetable or something, you know, with that. It may be with the ginseng.
That's true today, please.
I'm just, I mean, you know, if, if we do it this way, it will cover everything, you know, not just the cottage.
Right.
Because if it's, you know, somebody has a crop, crops or whatever, if it's, you know.
Strawberry. It'll cover everything. That's the first crop to come out.
Right. So, I mean, I think 180 days would cover, would be sufficient for anything, rather than everybody have to come in and ask for, you know, for another thing. I think just, just one, just one time do it, will do it all.
I guess my question to you would be that, you know, does the 180 days, is it potential for limiting people from using the housing in January, February, let's say, farm, the cottage end up?
Kenny can probably comment the more, you know, because the millers are part of the principals in the gin, but, you know, there has been cases where the gin season has got prolonged and maybe gone into January, but I don't think it's gone much beyond that.
Well, I'm gonna go back a little bit. They bring in people in the summer, and I don't know exactly when in the summer, to go in and rebuild things in the gin. Now, where these people stay, a contractor might be having his crew stay in there before, before the migrant workers come in that actually run the gin later. I do know that has been in the past, one of the things that they do do. The timeframe, I don't know, about 180 days, which would be six months. But I do know there is some work, workers that come in to rebuild pieces of that gin. But, you know, as all of us know that run equipment, it breaks down, we know that with our own riding lawnmowers, or pushmowers, it breaks down, we have to get somebody to work on. Well, this gin has a process of why it's closed down to rebuild things during the summer before the gin actually opens up to start ginning cotton. And I don't know if they have people to come in and stay there or not.
Chuck, if you look in your subdivision ordinance, the word residential is defined in there, and it says a building that is not occupied more than 180 days a year, and these 180 days do not have to be consecutive. You can stay in there 30 days in January, and then next time, might be 30 days in March.
Well, we know that, you know, the situation that comes up about bringing people in in August to start tearing the gin out, or if we have a late fall, you know, obviously, I think 180 days covers the whole parameters of what they would do from getting, getting the gin up and going to the time they want to last day of cotton through it.
We just don't want this to become a condominium.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. And I don't think that's, I really don't think that's their motive. They just want to do something better than what's out there. I just think we need to, if we're gonna put that parameter on there, I certainly hope we can communicate to them that there's a 180-day window. You know, if you have people to come in in August that need to use this, to work on the gin, that need to stay there 20 days, and that 20 days doesn't count against your 180. Is that the way I'm understanding it?
It would be 180 out of a calendar year, you can use it all up and down a year.
Right. Because Todd was the only one that was at the meeting, and I think he's the principal that's trying to get it going and all, so I think they're kinda under the, they're under the gun to try to get this, get this thing in place before gin season comes here, just don't let them have unknown hiccup.
From what I'm hearing, it sounds like the clock starts and stops once one crew or whoever, if they go in there, then if they stay 30 days and come out, it is vacant for another 30 days, then the clock starts again at the next 30 days. You know, they've got 30 days in that one year, calendar year, but after they're out, then it stops. It stops and starts.
Right, that's correct. So... Guess how many, was it four or five trailers out there now? Did they, did they house the people in?
He said four.
Four, that's right. It's, they're just trying to do something better for the people they bring in, but I can understand the position of the county too. I just wanna make sure that they understand because we do have seven principal huge taxpayers that support this county that I don't want them to think that we're trying to pull the wool over their eyes. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
My comment is really just a question. Have you considered, or is this ordinance also gonna apply to hunting camps and similar situations? Or is this strictly about this one application?
Seasonal agricultural housing.
Is hunting and fishing agriculture?
No. That's for a break.
Good question.
All right. No one else? Any other motion to come out of public hearing?
Does that move?
Second.
Our motion's second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we have before us the zoning ordinance tax amendment for agricultural housing, seasonal housing, and we add the words, not exceed 180 days per year.
This would be a permitted use in an A1 district.
Right. It has been clarified that it is not consecutive, but it would apply to the time, I guess, from January 1, when the time it starts to be occupied, up until the time it's, it's the end of December 31st, would not exceed 180 days, but not, still not consecutive habitation. So, it sounds like that would suit what they're looking for, what the owners are looking for, as long as we make that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, what we are seeking is clarification in this, in this ordinance. Mr. Brothers brought up the possibility that a bad season, a rainy season comes and throws a kink in their work, so we could have considerable amount of property flooded somewhere and it prolongs it, you know, getting to the cotton, that kind of thing. I don't want to make something that we're trying to make clear, I don't wanna make it too confined for situations like that. Do we need to include some wording about exceptions to, to help them? It's just a matter of debate.
Exactly. The only thing about the 180 days, these are in our subdivision ordinance, we have a list of definitions, and the word residential is defined, and any, any place that's occupied for over 180 days during the calendar year. So, if this gets classified as residential, then you've got to go through all the regulations for residents, there's some setbacks and the whole, the whole, you have to substitute there.
Okay. A little more, little more in-depth?
Melissa Lewis, of course, I know he can't speak for the all side, but he said generally the season ran three, three and a half months for October, sometimes went to January. But, you know, we're getting on a leap rate.
I'm just concerned about the conversation that we've stayed about chairman of that, come January 1, first occupancy. And that goes back to really to Ken's comment about, they send four, five, the ones that are real good with their hands and know how to fix machinery, they come in March. And that would, according to Mr. Chairman's conversations, that would start the clock. That, that's my concern.
All right, well, you know, we do have statutory requirements that is really pointed out. We've got a definition of the residential. It has, it cannot be over 180 days. Certainly, we've gotta comply with that. Anything we did, we'd, you know, we'd have to make a change to that in order to, to make it acceptable. So, I guess we're kinda limited. You know, we, we put, made some clarifications where they're not bound to, to, you know, consider occupancy from the time it's first started, but when the time is used and stopped and then starts again, so.
I would think it would be just the time that they were there. If they started, if they did the rehab in April for two weeks, that's two weeks. So, they would have 160 days to gin the cotton, that it would start when the first person entered, if they were not continually occupied.
Do you suggest that we table this?
No, I, I, I'm not really thinking that we need to table it. We can't. We have to abide by statute. We don't have the ability to change the definition of a residence. The state's done that. So, we have to abide by those. I just would like to, to make it clear this, this first time here. I mean, really, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna pitch hairs on this thing, agricultural, if the guys are coming in and repairing the building, that might not necessarily be agricultural anyway. That's, you could call that, you know, engineering. You could call it, you know, construction.
Mr. Chairman, there's a gentleman out here who'd like to say something. I'd like for him to come up.
Yeah, the, the public hearing's closed, but if you come forward here and give us your name, we'll hear what's, I believe it's pertinent to what we're doing. name, I believe it's pertinent to what we're talking about now.
Yes.
All right. Tell us who you are.
My name is Walter Rodan, and I've been working with the cotton gin on trying to get this building set over there. I don't think that any of the building stuff that you're talking about in the springtime, I don't think any of those people will be staying in the building, that they're talking about building for the temper, as for the guys who run the gin in the fall. I don't think any maintenance people in the springtime would be an issue. As far as my understanding, they were coming for about two and a half months in the fall.
Specifically for the fall.
Specifically to run the gin and the cotton, not to do anything else to the factory or anything.
All right, thank you. I wanted, I wanted to let him have his say, because he's really in written.
Right, yeah. Well, it seems like that it's basically going to be confined to seasonal workers and not just, you know, anyone that may be working in or around the cotton gin. And 180 days appear to be appropriate, as long as we give them some latency as far as when the clock starts and stops. They have to take into account for bad weather, late crops, so forth and so on. All right, are we ready to make a decision on the text amendment? So, a call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the text amendment on this issue to include the 180 days language.
We want to also include the clarification of...
The definition?
Right, that it starts with the time of occupancy and the time of consecutive ending of occupancy, where it's in the first phase at 30 days and moves out, then the clock stops and starts again.
I would include that in my motion, okay. May I just say?
Can I ask a question about that? Okay, you do 30 days, for some reason they take off and come back, and then start and all 30 days, but that's still, that would be 60 days, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I've got a motion on the floor. All right, motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. All right, thank you. Our next item is old business, where we have a memorandum agreement with the Gates County Chamber of Commerce. I believe we have before you the attorney's language to be added to that. Now, last discussion, I think we're all in agreement with approving a memorandum agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, but there was some concern about potential liability in case some things were put on the website that could put the county into a precarious situation. And the language the county attorney has provided says the county of Gates shall be held harmless and indemnified for any liability which may arise from this shared website use under this agreement with the Gates County Chamber of Commerce. So that language has been given to us. I believe, Mr. Horns, Horns, you wanted that in there, wanted to have him put that there. Are there any discussions on the memorandum of agreement? Okay, if not, we'll call for a motion to approve the MOA with the language provided by our legal counsel included in that agreement.
So move.
So.
All right, motion second, in favor for the discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye. All right, on the new business, we have our personnel board recommendation for Phase 3 of pay and classification. Okay, the, this is the last of our pay and reclassifications that we had to deal with, the tax administration department, the transit services, and soil and water conservation. Also included was Public Utilities Director and tell this operator build inspector level 1. All right, we have the force, the current proposed, and we have a chart of the differences after the reclassifications are made. Personnel board has looked this over, given the considerations, and has recommended approval to the board commissioners. What is in place in the board?
Mr. Chairman, this would conclude the pay and class. This would be the last, huh?
Yes, those are the last departments. The other departments have been done.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of Personnel Committee on this matter.
Second motion.
All right, motion second, motion and second, that we approve the final reclassification of our personnel. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Thank you much. Okay, our next item is ABC Board request for refund of water service at Impact B's. I believe we have before you information showing that the board commissioners waived that fee back in 2011 or 2012.
It was in 2012.
2012, okay. And since then, contractor paid, I think it was Calvin Davenport, paid $1,750 for water service slash Impact B's on the web, and the board had voted to waive the fees and a request to refund. I just want, I'd like to say that standing here, we waived the fee for the, for the ABC Board to have paid an Impact B. Now, they paid the $1,750, but my question would be, obviously, that cost has been built into their contract. Now, are the, the board and the tax dollars, are they going to receive some type of consideration for reimbursement or contract adjustment to cover that? I mean, to give him $1,750, and he's built that cost into his contract, I mean, that doesn't seem...
The reason that I brought it back to you all is because since this fee was waived, you have added the Impact Fee. When you all waived the fee, it was the $750 taffel fee. The Impact Fees were not in place at that time, so I brought this back to you to approve waiving the Impact Fee as well, as far as how the contract is ordered. You have to speak with Mr. Perry about that, and that part I can't answer.
Mr. Perry.
Yes, he paid his fee, he had to pay the fee, when he came to get the bill from it, he had to pay the fee to get the bill from it. They said we wouldn't give the bill from it, pay this. It's a fee that he paid, that he hadn't anticipated paying, that he would have to pay it. And we're going to, in the end, we will, we will be hit with it in the end. There was only fair, I mean, one kind of department working with another kind of department, I mean, not like we're private-owned business, it would only be fair to give the money back to the contractor.
Well, and I'm not opposed to that individually, but you know, as a contractor doing business, you know, if you've got to pay a fee, you don't build that cost into...
He would not, well, he had to pay his fee because he was told by the architect that the water, that the water meter was already in, paid for.
How about when he gave you, when he gave you his bid, that was a long time before he came to get his contract, his permit?
Yes, sir.
I wondered if in that bid that he gave you...
Well, the architect who drew up the contract was well aware that the water meter was paid for. And it's just not fair to make him pay again for something that he hadn't anticipated paying.
So you feel that that cost will never add into his...
No, no, sir, it's just, he paid it only because he wanted to get the job started. I mean, he didn't make an argument, he paid it only because he wanted the job started and get the bill from it, they wouldn't give him the bill from it unless he paid his fee. It was all of it.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like the inspection department didn't know that we had done that, and so they still had him to go ahead and pay the fee. Is that the sort of way you took it, Sandy?
Yes, and by the time we got it, I believe that we were made aware of it when Perry called the office.
So he went ahead and paid it to, so he could move forward?
Right, he could move forward.
Right.
So he had time to plan for and make an adjustment on the cost of doing the construction, for his construction bid.
He could, he could reimburse it provided he does not invoice the ABC Board for that condition.
We're not a private enterprise, and we're part of the county, we pay kind of tax and a pile of money from state every month, and to me, it's only fair.
Yeah, I don't mind giving you the money, Mr. Perry, in your board, because he's...
But we wouldn't pay it, if we don't give it back to, we're going to end up paying it.
He's going to pack it on.
He's going to add it on.
We're going to end up paying it. It's only fair to get the money back because he didn't anticipate paying his bid.
Well, this is what we want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
That it doesn't, there's not a refund of cost going to the board, to citizens.
If the architect who drew up the contract, put up the bid was well aware and had known that the water meter would be provided above.
Mr. Chairman, the architect called me today talking about this also, because I was involved in the original survey, and what Perry is saying is correct, and I feel that Mr. Davenport was charged by error, and it should be refunded, and I'll make that a motion.
All right, well, we have a motion to refund.
I'll second that.
And second, your brother discussed. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Our next item is amendment to the customer service policy to allow the tax office to collect prepayments at the tax office. Renee, do you all want to give us a little interpretation on that?
Either way, yeah, basically, the way the tax office is set up, the prepayments that we receive for taxes that have not been billed yet have been an issue that's been going on as long as I've been here, probably as long as Renee's been here. We've tried to, we've gotten together and tried to clarify and create a simpler way to track those. And everything that we talked about, the best way to do this would be for the prepayments to actually run through the tax office and then be brought to customer service to be posted. That allows them to track them, they know who's made the prepayments, and then they can bring them to us at the end of the year, everything is in place, and when the bills go out, those payments are posted and distributed properly. Really, the only change here is that those payments are actually going to be accepted and received by the tax office, then they can bring those payments to us daily, just like the registered deeds, sheriff's department, and other departments do. This won't change any other payments, this is strictly for prepayments, and we may get one a handful, we, there are very few of these that do come through, but we would like for them to be able to accept those payments and then bring the money to us as the other departments do each day.
Mr. Chairman, this is a question for Renee. I know at the end of each month, sometimes we have to go through a process of repaying these different people. Is this to help eliminate some of that also?
Well, they're actually overpayments.
Overpayments?
Sometimes we put them in as prepayment if we can. What this is going to eliminate, why can't, in order for the customer service department to collect those prepayments, they're actually having to go in on last year's bill and post them as an overpayment. And we're having to run them through the refund process and then posting them as a prepayment. And it is, it totally gives us a wrong finger every month with that refund figure, because these items are not actually refunds. And the only way to do away with that is to have them come back into our office.
All right, I think that clarified it. Why don't you please the board to approve this amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this amendment to the...
Customer Service.
Yes, sir, current policy.
Right.
Customer service policy.
All right, now a motion on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
I propose a second that we approve the customer service policy tax office prepayment amendment. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Okay, thank you. We have Budget Amendment 57 for board elections. And I would ask, what has been the result of the meeting with the board elections since this has been put out?
I was not involved in that meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Elections Director, Chairman of the Board. The Director of the Board of Elections has expressed some concern over this happening and wanting to have a better understanding of the purchase and policies. And obviously, we want everybody to succeed and do the right thing. So I think the Board of Elections is going to work real hard to comply with purchase and policy in the future and make sure everything works well.
All right. We have Budget Amendment number 57 before you. Why don't you please the board?
You got the writing?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Just had one break me.
Same, are you aware of... This is money spent.
It is money that has been invoiced. Yes, sir. The way our procurement policy reads, who's responsible for, you know, that's kind of up in the air, but...
Any equipment in this number is a big number.
No, this is strictly for the ballots and the coding and the supplies for the elections themselves. I believe there was a total of about $8,000 worth of invoices related to this.
Do you remember, Mr. Chairman, what the comparative number for last year was?
I do not.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment 57. I'll make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment 57.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, to pass along now, my comments to that. Well, absolutely.
All right, the next item would be to go into closed session. We have one other item we do need to discuss, from a legal standpoint, and we're going to call for a motion to go into closed session.
Set move.
Ten points, sorry.
Let's do this.
Ten points.
This is, yes.
We had them before, we, we don't have to have a second on a nightly, we don't normally have one citizen's comments on a nightly, on daily, we do have two, but nightly, we only have one. But if there's a citizen that has something they want to share with us, certainly we won't, we wouldn't oppose to them make a comment they would like to, if they want to come up to the podium, certainly they'll hear that. All right, we'll leave it. Really thank everyone for coming, and we will...
Mr. Chairman, with more than trying to...
When you go into closed session, that's the end for tonight?
Yes, that will be the last action of business we'll have for tonight. When we come out of closed session, we will adjourn, I mean, if normally, the citizens don't wait until we come out of closed session, of course, you're welcome to come out and wait, and then we will come back into open session, and then we will, we will adjourn.
So maybe, yes, I may speak.
Certainly.
I'm not sure this is the right time for this, because I don't know what you're getting ready to consider, but it's my understanding that, that you're going to consider some changes to the county subdivision ordinance, either tonight or in the very near future?
No, sir.
Okay, then these comments are not for this time?
We will be going into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1183, to discuss a legal matter, and that is all that we have on the agenda. Need a motion to go to closed session?
Set move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, thank everybody for coming, that would be... All right, I need a motion to come out of closed session. Set move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, nay. Need a motion to adjourn?
Set move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you much.
All right, good play.